All right, good evening, everyone. Want to call the Caldwell County Commissioners Board meeting to order this September 11th, 2023. I'd like to welcome all of those who are in attendance this evening in our audience, as well as those who are joining us by TV. And our first item on our order of business is our invocation. We have Pastor Robert Livingston with us this evening from Mount Zion Baptist Church. And then we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Donnie Potter will lead us in that. So Pastor.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we pause in these moments to acknowledge your presence and to honor your position of lordship over our lives, our county, and our world. We give you thanks for your blessings and for the care that you give to us. We thank you for these who have accepted the responsibility to lead our community and to honor them for their service. We pray for your wisdom on their behalf. We pray for courage as they face challenging issues. On this day of remembrance, we pray for our nation and for our leaders. We pray for the families of those who lost loved ones on that fateful day. We especially pray for the brave men and women who lost their lives protecting the innocent. Give us grace and peace, oh God, for the days ahead, and may we always look to you for wisdom and strength. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Pastor.
Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last minute, we had a resolution come in from the federal government, the Appalachian Regional Commission. It came in at a little after noon today to affirm our commitment to the construction, along with us and the town of Sawmill, for the Evergreen Industrial Park. This is one of the last things they do before we get a grant award announcement. So maybe by the end of the month or sometime next month, we'll be able to celebrate half a million dollar grant. And so I ask that you add that consent agenda as item 20.
All right. So adding item 20 for the ARC grant. Any other additions? Here in none was the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So our first item is a resolution commemorating the September 11th attacks of 2001. And we have that resolution with us this evening. Am I reading that?
If you wish, sir, or anyone else. Whoever you appoint can read it.
All right. Well, I will read this resolution as follows. Patriot Day Commemoration of September 11th, 2023. Whereas on Tuesday, September 11th, 2001, the United States of America fell victim to a terrorist attack that claimed the lives of 2,996 individuals. And whereas an initiative to remember the lives of those lost during this terrorist attack, Patriot Day was drafted by a joint resolution of the United States Congress on December the 18th of 2001. And whereas Patriot Day honors those who perished as a result of an attack on the World Trade Center in New York City, and those who perished attempting to rescue individuals trapped under debris and on high floors of those buildings. And whereas Patriot Day also honors those who perished as a result of the attacks on the Pentagon in Virginia and the lives that were lost on United Airlines Flight 93 in Pennsylvania. And whereas Caldwell County honors those who selfishly risked their lives to rescue others and recognize those individuals as heroes. And whereas each year on September the 11th, citizens across the United States of America are reminded how precious our freedom and safety truly are and are encouraged to pay tribute to those whose lives were tragically lost that day. And now therefore be it resolved, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Caldwell County commemorate Patriot Day on September 11th, 2023, and express our deepest condolences for those lives lost in 2001 terrorist attacks against our nation, as well as our highest gratitude for those who endeavor to preserve our liberties and safety. So do I hear a motion we adopt this resolution this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And we just want to, at this time, go into a moment of silence and remembrance of those who gave all on the 9/11 date and the tax of our country and the freedom that it stands for. But at this time, we'll enter into a moment of silence and remembrance of those. Thank you for that. And we certainly do appreciate, and many of us remember the day well and where we were and what role we may have been in in emergency services and in our normal lives. And so I've been reading some of those comments and stories today through different avenues on Facebook, and some of those are very touching, but we certainly will never forget those men and women that gave their lives on that day. Anybody else? All right, we'll move to our next resolution, and this is a resolution honoring one of our employees, Deborah Debbie Keller, and for her years of service that she had with Caldwell County, and certainly was a stellar employee, as well as years of service that she had with us. And so would one of y'all like to read this? You want me to?
Actually, why don't you let Josh?
Yeah.
Work with her for many years.
We're going to put you on the spot, Josh. Josh Engel, our tax administrator, and where Deborah was working, where Debbie was working for you. So I'll pass that down.
Whereas Caldwell County Tax Department Administrative Assistant Deborah Debbie Deborah Keller began her career with the county on September 13th, 1973. And whereas Mrs. Keller served the county as a switchboard operator, where she gained a vast knowledge of every position and every person that worked for the county. And whereas in 1975, Mrs. Keller carried the knowledge she learned from operating the switchboard to the tax department, where she held the position of secretary. And whereas Mrs. Keller made the tax department her home away from home and became a fixture in the tax department. And whereas Mrs. Keller was much more than an employee who worked at the county. At her desk, she had what many considered a therapy chair, where employees from all departments found her friendship and wisdom. And whereas Mrs. Keller offered a listening, listening ear and sound advice as she walked with her colleagues through celebrations, sicknesses, loss of loved ones, relationships, broken homes, and straying children. And whereas Mrs. Keller talked with employees through difficult times, she never forgot her responsibility to taxpayers to do her job, and will remind those in her therapy chair that it was time to return to their duties. And whereas Mrs. Keller served the county for 50 years, making her the longest-serving employee in the history of Caldwell County government. And now therefore be it resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners remembers the life and service of Deborah Debbie Keller and dedicates a park bench in her memory.
All right. So here in the resolution, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resolutions as read by Josh.
Any other comment or discussion?
I will tell you, I've sat in that chair a couple of times. So very familiar. She was a, she was a very, anybody that knew her was blessed to be in her presence. She was a fine lady.
Yes, sir. Definitely.
And I guess just for a little bit of history, but Ms. Keller passed away recently. And in that and recognition of that, almost 50 years, and I don't know if anybody grasped that part of the resolution, but 50 years of employment for Caldwell County government, really unheard of. Most people for county government pull their 28 and a half and use a year and a half of sick leave, and they're gone. So almost 50 years. She was just a few weeks short of that 50-year anniversary, but what a pleasure it was to have her and her abilities that she brought for many years in Caldwell County. So it's truly an honor to be able to honor her this evening.
Yes, sir.
And with that, I'll call the question. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And I knew there wouldn't be any, but thank you, Josh, for reading that.
Thank you.
All right. Next, under our items for decision this evening, Dino DiVinaardi is with us, and we're going to be discussing our ambulance franchise ordinance. This is the second meeting and second time we've had to bring that up for discussion and approval, I think. You might not have been prepared for that.
That's all right. So this is the second portion of the proposal for an ambulance franchise to be extended, reissued to North State Medical Transport for facilitation of transportation from a medical center either to another medical center or back home and also to other treatment facilities within the county. They've been performing that for the past year. It is now up for renewal, and this is the second reading of the franchise. And we're requesting approval.
All right. So and I think we decided at the last meeting, this was for...
Three years.
Three years. I didn't want to speak out of turn, but I thought that was correct. So...
Are they here, Dino, tonight?
They were present last week.
Yeah, I thought so.
All right. So here in the recommendation, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting this North Carolina Medical Transport Ambulance Service Franchise Ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this ambulance franchise ordinance as presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. So thank you again, Dino.
Thank you, Dino.
Next, we have a presentation, a partnership with ICGH for Behavioral Health Services. Corey Richardson. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
So you do exist, Corey. I've heard your name a lot, but didn't know that you actually were who, you know, the real person.
Yes, sir. Well, fortunately, we have been able to start working with your EMS, and I think it's been very fruitful even, even early on. And the hardest thing I have to do today is keep it to, I was told by the county manager, about 10 to 15 minutes. I teach at Wake Forest, so sometimes it's a little hard. And, but I have good news. I'm not going to ask you for money. I, I will tell you that one thing that we do, and I'll go into it in some depth, is that we're able to bring federal dollars when we participate on the county level. We've been very successful in that. So while I'm going to skip through a couple of these on our slide deck today, we do offer a lot of different services. And the very exciting thing is the health director is here today from the, the health department, is that to be able to be working so closely with the health department and co-located, a lot of the work that we try to do will now be better performed with better levels of coordination, and rather than these siloed agencies that kind of mishandle a lot of the patient care. Similarly, that's what we've been doing with EMS, is that we've been able to really do tight referral systems, so that when there's somebody that needs help immediately, we're able to adjust and provide that. Sometimes there's an agency that might be considered, you know, part of the MCO credential with Via Health or something, and they're not going to be able to provide a lot of different services. So while we are very strong lifting in certain types of grant programs and other types of programs that others don't provide, you can see a little bit by this, and I've given you some information today that kind of outlined some of the services, there are a lot of services that we provide, whether it's mental health, or whether it's addiction, whether it's something that's standard like, you know, CBT counseling, or something newer like EMDR, some of the newer interventions that address trauma. But we also take care of children and adolescents and not just adults. And we're one of the few agencies now that are participating in UNC Collaborative around Trauma Focus CBT. But there's a lot of other programs that we provide, and sometimes a lot of those programs, like our prevention programs, are funded by federal grant dollars like HERSA. And so while we take private insurance, and while we take Medicaid and all the new 1115 waivers, and a lot of the uninsured are funded by the, via health, we bring federal dollars. We have federal MAT grants, so treatment grant dollars, as well as community intervention dollars. I'll talk a little bit about that, because I know I'm on a timeframe today. Let's talk a little bit about the opioid crisis, if you don't mind. And that's really where we've been able to partner with Jason and your county manager and everybody at EMS. And there's some bridge programs where you have somebody that's in crisis, and you know, like I know, that we're going to lose an entire generation from the overdose crisis. You know, more people now than at any point over the 20 years of this crisis that we've been going forward are dying, dying with a lot of regularity. And so, and I do think that we have, this is recovery month, there are two crises that are going on. One is suicide, and one is overdose deaths. But we do a recover, a 12-step facilitation model, and we incorporate a lot of different interventions around social support, medication, counseling, transportation, housing, and, but we use people with lived experience, those in recovery, working with those. Some, some people may remember Bill Wilson and AA and that model that was an empirical model that they used because it worked. It wasn't one that was studied then tried to be applied. It was done the opposite way, is that you know what works, so you do it. Over the years, it has been turned into a clinical model, and that clinical model is the foundation of all of our addiction treatment services. And we incorporate CBT, cognitive behavioral therapy, motivational enhanced therapy, addressing social determinants of health. Do they have insurance? Are they employable? Do they have a GED? Do they have HIV? Do they have hepatitis? All these other things along with that. So, and I'll show you a little bit later on about what that model looks like, so you can get a good visualization. But if you expect everybody who are struggling from, let's say, mental illness or struggling from an opioid use disorder who's living in an encampment out in the woods, you expect the modus to walk to your clinic and get services, and everything is good, it's not going to work that way. And we figured that out. But early on, I didn't know if I was ever going to be able to provide the interventions that I know that worked. And over the last 12, 15 years, we've been able to start to, to offer those various services, physical medicine, transportation, housing, and others. But so many of the providers, and I do call them predatory providers, or the dosing go, the pill mill doctors that got us in this mess in large part, the pharmaceutical companies in large part because of those opioid settlement dollars, we know what they did. Those dollars are going to be gone, and we're going to still have this problem, right? What we try to do is the opposite, quality focused care. So we're not the McDonald's, we're not a big organization, we're a growing organization, but we focus on quality of care. So in some of the things that we did early on that set us apart, where MCOs like partners said, hey, we want you to open another office, or we want you to participate with this, smaller programs, really quality care around, you know, now they call them peer support. We always incorporated social support, but now UNC Chapel Hill has a peer support program. But we were doing lived experience models before they were doing that. Observe urine, so we know really what's going on. It's a disease of deception, so you know, the disease itself that happens between the ears definitely does not want to be detected. And sometimes we forget that this is not a moral failing. We sometimes forget this is really a disease between the ears. But a lot of these other programs are only dosing go at five in the morning, we don't take insurance, we just take cash. There's a, there's a huge red flags, aren't there? Or we only take North Carolina Medicaid. Well, sometimes people get great care with North Carolina Medicaid, and then they get a great job, they don't have to go somewhere else, they can stay with us, because there's not an insurance plan that we don't take. But I can talk a little bit more about that at the Q and A section. We do have a lot of providers on the behavioral health side, and keep in mind that that's the focus of addiction treatment. Medication is great, but people will die on Suboxone today. They will have Suboxone on them, but they will die of an overdose, or they use Suboxone to bridge between highs, just like a handgun can be used by a police officer to protect some lives, or can be used by a criminal. Medication can help in the right way or the wrong way. So we do it as an assistant part of the treatment, really with a focus on behavioral health. And you'll see why we have social workers, addiction treatment providers, counselors for the higher levels of care like partial hospitalization, IOP, licensed mental health counselors to address trauma, co-occurring trauma, and other types of conditions, which a lot of people come to our program. Peer supports are the glue between all of that, so they can help them get SSI, or help them with supportive employment, or they can help them get to that probation meeting or that DSS. They can work with them when they have challenges in between those counseling opportunities. While medication is important, like I said, it is only a small part, and most of the people in our program will titrate off medication, so they don't have to pee in a cup the rest of their life, they don't have to be on prescriptions, they learn drug-free coping skills. And so the idea is an absence-based model, and medication assisted treatment, when taken the way it should be appropriately, there's no mood altering effects, it's a blocker. And if you're a little bit older like I am, you remember if you had a friend with alcoholism, they gave man abuse, and they got sick as a dog, that's a blocker. You can't metabolize alcohol. So when the medication is used, it blocks from use. So now they got to figure out how to cope. Though if they continue to use abstinence, they can develop drug-free coping skills, the prefrontal cortex starts to work again, the limbic system starts to work, the brain starts to function, and all of a sudden, they realize, my God, did I really do all that all those years? You know, they can't, they can't get a hold of it. You know, it's like being hit by a truck and you wake up. Well, that's, that's the way it is. It's like a nightmare you wake up from and you realize that you really did that. But we help people with other people with lived experience put their lives back together. Medication is very helpful, especially physical medicine. You haven't treated your diabetes, you haven't treated your heart disease, you know, so we can take care of the whole person. I talked a little bit about why medication assisted treatment is part of it, but not the focal point. And a lot of the providers, that's going to be the focal point, dosum, 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 and they'll still use other medications, or they'll use other listed drugs that's not working for our program. So sometimes harm reduction, like the methadone clinic, OTP, maybe that's a better option rather than dying, but that's not the quality of work that we provide. We really do focus on an abstinence model, we really do focus on getting people with supportive employment, other things to turn their lives around. We own our own pharmacies, and I've talked to your county manager and your EMS team about that. There's a lot of stigma, as you might imagine. There might be some stigma here, there's around medication assisted treatment and addiction as a disease. So there were times when people don't want to go into a pharmacy and get medication that would keep them from being sick, because if you're sick and you're craving, you're not going to really focus on what anybody's saying to you, and you're not going to be able to put your life together. So to go in and get that blocker, you're, you're afraid that your kids, you know, the mom working behind the counter as a pharmacy tech may know your kids and that kind of thing. So we do have clinic-based pharmacies to increase confidentiality, but they got to participate, and they got to reach their treatment goals to stay in the program. If they're actively using, that's not a good fit. They're not a good fit for transitional housing, it's not a good fit for any part of our, our program. So, but we do, we do provide that. The best part about, I think, what I do today is at some point, we needed to, we need to participate with pharmacists, they didn't want to treat our people with respect, let them into the lobby, they would make them get their prescriptions out the window at the drive-through. So we opened our own pharmacy, and now we have several. We couldn't get anybody with transportation, we started our own transportation thing. Couldn't get anybody with, with housing, so we started recovery housing. Now I'm, I guess recently I just did a federal talk for HERSA nationally on how you can do properly transitional housing. Every one of these, we now bring to every community that we're in through a grant-funded program. So while we get state grants, while we get state funding that's available, the quality of care has allowed us to get large federal grants. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But a large federal grants include community intervention, PSA TV ads, prevention at fifth grade level. A lot of us got it at high school, too late. So now we have the STAR program that we fund through several different counties. We move people from the encampments into recovery housing, assign a peer support specialist to work with them, and our large encampments are growing and they're moving. So in certain areas like Shelby, the police department works with us, so they can use heat-seeking drones, so we can identify where they've moved. Go out there and talk to them, like you don't have to be out here anymore. Rescue Narcan, other forms of harm reduction, like lock boxes for medication. Some people need to be on powerful opiates, they have chronic pain, or they have cancer pain, keeping them, helping people understand how to keep them safe, out of, out of medicine cabinets, like guns. Keep them safe, keep them out of kids' harms, you know, out of kids' hands. So we do a lot of that, along with the peer support programs. So we have peer supports in shelters, we have peer supports that work in DSS, we have peer supports that work in the jail, if you call it Cleveland County, we have peer supports that work directly in the jail. So upon release, we're right there to get them, take them right into housing, even give Vivitrol, another blocker that lasts a month, so they can't use for that month, place them right into transitional housing. And then of course, our treatment grants. Recently, we were awarded, we're in the middle of five grants right now, starting in the beginning of this month, we got a $3 million HERSA grant that covers five counties, Wilkes, Yadkin, Sari, Cleveland, Lincoln. We had a very strong three-year grant that we're winding down for HERSA for Lincoln and Cleveland, and it was a very competitive grant, an annual budget of $1 million, that we're able to provide mobile units, transitional housing, and MAT, which is medication assisted treatment and counseling. We have also incorporated all those other interventions that we know that work, but we have to have partnerships, and that's how we're able to secure large grants, is really partners that want to work with us. But very proud of, of our work, and we have really strong outcomes. When you have strong outcomes, that's value, that's evaluated by an outside evaluator, NC State and other types of organizations that evaluate our outcome, we're not evaluating our outcome, somebody else is looking at it for us, because you're not always so objective if you check your own test, right? And that's what has been really key for us to continue to grow across North Carolina, which we have been able to do now. We were one of the first in Catawba County to have a specialized program around pregnancy. Some of the very first referrals I ever got were from Catawba Valley Medical Center. I remember the very first one was a woman with twins. Now every single hospital has their own program, but back in 2010, 2011, they did not. So we're very proud of that. One of the nurses that went through our program has gone through a program, a Suboxone program as she was pregnant, and works with those people still today who are struggling. And one of the things that's interesting, if you, sometimes when you arrest somebody, that's an opportunity to talk to them and turn their life around. When somebody finds out that they are pregnant and they're in active drug addiction, then they know they're going to lose their children because of the STOP Act, they're like, I need to do something. That's an opportunity. That's an opportunity. And the medication gets them to the delivery room. If you, if they're afraid to come into treatment, and they're afraid to get help, they may die before you can get that baby to the delivery room. So we do have a very strong pregnancy support, support program. This is the slide deck, this is a slide that I gave to the governor, I was on his opioid panel, and it really does outline a lot of what I've talked about today, a bio, psychosocial, and spiritual model. And spiritual doesn't always mean faith tradition, but it definitely means meaning and purpose in your life, where if you had drugs there, removing drugs and finding something else to get you motivated. Without that, none of the others are going to be key. We've been doing this for a long time, teaching at Wake Forest, working in the communities, Patrick McHenry, Tom Tillis, the governor. So we're not just a sit in our office, bill claims type of agency, and I'm very proud of that. We're very strong in the faith community, we've been very strong out, a lot of outreach opportunities, I do research with North Carolina Physicians Health Program, and I think we've been very innovative of all of our programs, where we've been able to do things that are evidence-based, and then circle back, present through Northwest AHEC, evidence-based. If you go on Northwest AHEC right now, you'll probably see four different modules, interactive modules about best practices that I've given. This is this month, we do large conferences, like a recovery summit, and we've been doing this over the, the course of our, our company's history. We're very proud of our work in that regard. This is one of my very first buildings that I bought for recovery housing, this one is funded by HUD. So these are some of the work that we've done through the federal grant, allowing people to know there's free help available. And we've been doing these outreach bags, really addressing stigma. One thing that you'll notice is that there's a lot of stigma around addiction, and our team is based upon a lot, a lot of people with long-term recovery. You can live with a lot of diseases healthy and well if you allow the interventions to work and you follow the model of care, whether it's diabetes to control your blood sugar or otherwise. And people tend not to know that. And so a big part of what we do is, is really that anti-stigma promotion. We get a lot of supplies, menstruation products, toilet paper, and others, and we go out into the encampments, and we give some of these supplies to them, but we're not just giving some supplies, we're telling them, you don't have to stay here today. I've got a house, I've got apartments, you can come with us, and you can turn your life around. It's a hard row, but everybody that goes out there, or peer supports who have lived experience, that are, that are motivated to help somebody else. And as you may know, nobody ever thinks it's going to happen to them, nobody thinks it's going to happen to their grandchild, nobody ever thinks it's going to happen to their own children. And so I always imagine, I have two little girls, I imagine, what if it was my child? And it's especially difficult for women out there, these encampments are growing, we just, we work with the Gastonia Police Department, you may have seen in the news, 150 people, we closed an encampment because of a murder. I've taken people out of that encampment. One woman had been out there for nine months, when she got into the van, it was ammonia. She had not bathed for nine months. Severe mental illness, opioid use disorder, and had been violated repeatedly. She got a clean bed that night, she got a female therapist, she got medication, and she's doing very well. And I just always... Um, and I just always imagine, what if it was one of mine? You know, I, I will share with you, my father drank himself to death. My grandfather, my father's father drank himself to death. I've been sober for 25 years and I'm very happy about that. The medical board made me go to AA, made me go to treatment. And the model we use is what got me sober. Uh, a lot of harm reduction through a lot of our grants and we, we fund all of this. We're not asking for economy dollars. And you're thinking about your opioid dollars, you can hold on to that. You can see what works and you can decide to fund what works. But you and I can get federal dollars and we could go ahead and fund while we have those federal dollars. Somebody's gonna get them. Why not bring them here and, and go ahead and fund what, figure out what works for Caldwell County and the surrounding region? And then we can use the opiate dollars. Cause they're not gonna last forever. The tobacco sentiment dollars are long gone. We got a worse tobacco problem with vaping than we've ever had. We use mobile units and we, uh, and again, like with Cle- Cleveland County, Lincoln County, a lot of our counties, uh, we have really strong relationships because we do really good work. But we partner, we don't bulldoze. We do what you want, the way you want it, but we'll tell you what we think was gonna work or not work. We do PSA TV ads, really trying to put a positive spin on people with addiction. If you do the right things, you can turn your life around. And we have a whole team that has, has gone through that. A lot of provider education, free of charge. Uh, and we're very proud of our educational model and we've been doing that for about 10 years now. And I, at least at Northwest AHEC, uh, I'm considered a contact expert on opiate use disorder. A little bit about me, a little bit about our medical director. I'm sorry I talk too much. We're opening inpatient facilities in Carteret County. We're very excited about that, mental services. And, uh, a little bit more about us, but I apologize for talking over. And, uh, if there's any questions at this point, or if the county manager wants to add a little bit, cause he and some of our EMS team is here today, like Jason. And it's been an honor and a privilege to work with them so far. When they call us up and they have somebody in need and he can share with you a little bit about some of that, um, we stop what we're doing and we make sure that Caldwell County gets what they need. Thank you for.
Let, let me say, you didn't talk too long. You have a very interesting comments and I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Because these are all things that we, as commissioners, have been hearing and wondering about and trying to get a good handle on. And it sounds like he's got a good handle on a lot of things, Mr. Duncan. And, and we appreciate you coming because we know that there, there's a next step. You know, we, we're trying to be intervention. We've done that with restart, but we know there's some steps that's gotta be taken next and, and getting folks help. And, uh, and it's been a challenge. And so I appreciate what you had to say and you gave us a lot of information fast. But, uh, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, you know, the, somebody's, I think somebody was talking about, what is it that we need? And I said, we need, we need everything they got. So we don't, you know, we didn't wanna just say we want one or two of your services. We want it all, cause we need it all. Um, I lost a stepson on June night to an overdose. Um, one of the biggest challenges that I see is the fact that he was gone for six months. Was in jail for two or three months. So he was clean for eight months, but when he got out, he went right back to where he was. There was no, no next place. There was no housing or anywhere to carry him. They, the rehab facility took him right back to where he, where they originally picked him up at. So, um, I'm excited to have you here. Um, it still blows my mind that we didn't even know you were one county over from us. So, um, but we're, you know, we won't look back. We're looking forward and I'm grateful for anything you guys can do for us. We have a huge need in our community. There's a lot of people suffering. A lot of families are suffering. A lot of children are suffering because of their parents. So anything that you can bring to the table that'll assist our community, we're appreciative.
Yes.
Sorry for your loss.
Thank you. Now you will be, will you have a facility or office here in Caldwell?
Our, our intention, our hope is working with the county manager to be co-located inside the health department if that works for the commissioners. One of, and we do that in Lincoln County. We're working on that in other counties. And the, and the idea is that, uh, that co-location allows a greater, uh, collaboration.
Yep.
So a lot of people are gonna be able to, rather than given a piece of paper, they get to walk over to us and you have your peer team there. You got your health department there. Um, so that's just the first step and a lot of the other types of services. But they, um, Anna's been very welcoming at the health department. And I, I, and it's one of the best opportunities that we've seen to break down those silos. We, you know, and the, the other part about the growth of our program, cause we started out many years ago, it was just primary care services and a PCMH with behavioral health.
Yep.
Was it was an organic process in finding key people that had a skill set and adding them to our team. And now with the advent of a lot of newer interventions, telehealth services, um, and a lot of funding, a lot of federal funding. We're able to do a lot more than we could ever do before. Um, but you can only do that if you do, if you live up to the quality of care. Um, and so that's what we've tried to do. But there's, there are gaps in every county that we, we see. And it's, um, it's a tireless job to keep, to, to grow appropriately and help. Um, but if you just keep doing the same thing, you're gonna get the same outcomes.
Correct.
And, uh, so, and I will tell you, it's, it's a blessing that we can lose money on doing some things that we know work anyway.
Right.
Cause when I started with my housing and I started with my other programs like transportation, you know, starting with free medication. I opened a pharmacy because people didn't have money. They were ending, they had to sell half their prescription so they wouldn't be sick that week. And I couldn't, I couldn't live like that. So the idea is that if you, if you know what works and you do what works, the rest of it will come along. And it was only the last maybe three or four years that large federal grants came to us. But, cause to be honest with you, I just didn't think that was something that we could achieve. But now that we've achieved those, uh, it's just been very, very fruitful.
That's good.
Really good work helping lots of people.
And I think the, the reason you're continuing to get that is because of the success you're having. So my, my next question is for the county manager. Where are we are, where, where are we at with getting them set up at the health department?
So Anna, it's been very accommodating and we'll be moving in very shortly.
Okay. So we got space and all that?
Yeah, uh, if you remember, we, we tried this with GRT. We were gonna have onsite clinicians. So the space that we have there will be two offices, also a bathroom where you can do observations on, on testing. And then they'll be using some of the, the larger rooms for group therapy, coming in, having AA meetings, NA meetings, things like that. So right now, you know, our in-count services are of a value, but we're not taking cash out of pocket. We were gonna do this anyway.
Right.
And we have the space. So it's a, it's a great marriage. And I wanna thank, uh, Mayor Cedar Rock, Bob Floyd, called me out of the blue one day and said, you need to talk to Corey Richardson. I was like, well, who's that? You know, we have people calling us all the time asking for this opiate money. They think we're just got a fortune. And so I said, okay, appreciate that. So on my vacation, uh, we had a phone conference and in five minutes, we knew.
Yeah.
We knew we had to do this. So this has happened since, just since the end of June. So what, eight weeks? We've been able to put all this together. Fantastic.
Yep. So my next question is, and I, one of the things I noticed in there, and I think this is, obviously opioids is a, a big issue in our community, but I think we also have, um, we have an aging community. Uh, a lot of our seniors, as they, you know, become the age, I have one in mind right now. They, they struggle with depression and things like that, cause they're not getting out a whole lot. They're staying at home a whole lot. So they're not, you know, how would somebody that might be listening tonight on television, watching this, we're gonna watch it in the future, how will they find your services? How would they reach out to you?
Well, unfortunately, I never thought we would be larger than we are. I just thought I'd have a little off, in an office in Hickory and I could make a three o'clock tea time. And that didn't happen. People were dying on a waiting list and it changed my life.
Yeah.
Um, and so ICGH Treatment Center is there, is right now, we probably have about 10 offices. Um, and so you can get help before we are now in Caldwell County's health department through contacting our main phone number or going on our website. We have online intakes and they can just call our intake coordinator. And then if you're an agency trying to refer somebody, there's an online referral at ICGH. So you can just do a release of information if you're a local doctor or something. Uh, that way we can coordinate care with you. Um, if you're in Caldwell County, it's gonna be a lot easier once we set up services, I think, for the in-person. Uh, but through telehealth, a lot of our services are now through telehealth.
Yeah, I had a gentleman reach out to me a couple of weeks ago and he asked me a question and I was like, you know what? I don't know the answer to this, but I'll get you an answer. His question was, you know, I'm almost 70 years old. I feel like I'm becoming depressed, cause I'm not getting out and doing things. Where can I go to get help?
What, what happened during COVID is our number of, of older persons jumped dramatically.
Yep.
Not just around alcohol use disorder, because a lot of, you know, seniors who really were locked away for a long period of times. We got a lot of calls where people were, you know, they went to see dad and dad was having seizures and drinking at nine in the morning. Um, but with the advent of telehealth, you can use medication. You can use counseling, traditional counseling, CBT, MET. You can use stuff like EMDR, iMo movement desensitation, which is a newer intervention to work with people. So there's a lot of, and you can even use that through a telehealth model. And some people say it's even better through telehealth than in-person through the equipment that we have. So there's a lot of interventions. Um, but use of peer support is kinda like that also, that, that glue. And so depending upon what people need, you're able to, as you can see, develop a real treatment plan, not just like all we have is this and this is all we're gonna give. Like all we have is some Prozac and we're just gonna give that. Like we can really try to figure out exactly what's wrong. And you can do that not just with individual patients, but you can do that with communities. If you realize where the overdoses is, uh, where the overdoses are, you can focus on that part of the community. If you figure out that your community needs a lot of help with children and adolescents, which we do find out, the generational challenges that we have, because it goes from one generation next, you can focus on that aspect. And you can even get specific grant funding, like high fidelity wrap just for children and adolescents. So you can, so you, you can do that on the community event. But if you don't think about it, if you don't study it, you don't try to do what meets that community's needs, it's just like with a patient. If you are a lazy clinician, you don't really try to figure out where the, where the core problems are, the essential problems, you're not gonna try the, the essential interventions.
But if I'm sitting at home and I'm realizing that, hey, I'm kinda slipping in this. I'm a, I'm a 70, some 75-year-old female or male and I'm slipping into depression. Can I call you directly?
Yeah. And so I don't know if they could see any of this, but there's our, our, our phone number that works across North Carolina, that 828-322-5915. They can call that phone number. If they type in ICGH, they're gonna find our treatment centers as the top of the list, ICGH. And the website does take them to integratedcarehickory.com, cause that's, that's our, our first office.
Perfect.
It's too much to change a website. But, um, so anyway, and then what they can do off of that is they can just call us, which a lot of older people would prefer calling. So 828-322-5911, uh, 5915. And when I was at Hal Ro, I do a radio show sometimes. He does, he always makes me say it three times. And that way they remember it, but that's Hal, you know?
Perfect.
Um, but we're very proud of the work we're doing. We were highlighted on Charlotte Today recently. We were down there in Shelby at Spectrum News. We've been on Hal's show. Um, we're just excited about the opportunity to be here in Caldwell County. Um, and so thank you for, for that. If you have any questions afterwards, just call me directly or through the county manager. I'll come back up and we can meet. You could ask me directly or get me on the horn, whatever works for you.
I have one question. Do you have adequate staffing to take care of Caldwell County?
I absolutely have. I already have a dual-licensed therapist that has walked through the health department and, and with Anna. So he's ready to come. Not just one license, but two professional licenses to deliver, deliver care. We have a 20, we have a, a, a social worker, LCAS, a dual-licensed social worker, that all he does is assessments every day of the week. So nobody has to wait on a waiting list for 30 days.
Good.
Um, we have peer support that I don't even know how many. We probably have somewhere between 12 or more, just peer supports. And then we look from the local population to add staff. So when we do, um, add staff, whether they're social workers or therapists or peer supporter counselors, we add, we try to add from the community. That's always the best way to go about it. Um, and then because of our, my own license, we can train counselors, peer support and, uh, licensed addiction specialists ourselves. As part of our licensure, we can train counselors ourselves. So, uh, that's really a, a nice added feature that we have as an educational organization.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you very much for having me today.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
We do have to adopt an MOU, uh, to enter into this partnership with ICGH. So do I hear a motion that we adopt the MOU as has been presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the MOU that's been presented.
Any other discussion or comment on that? Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And we thank you again, Corey, for coming. Uh, next we have a presentation. I'm new, I'm gonna mess this up, I know.
I was waiting on this one.
Atriax? Atriax Group Design Build. So, uh, come on up, uh, they, as they entered the room this evening, how many you got? Six? Five with you? So there was one for every commissioner. I thought they're not gonna be up.
Before we get started with them, and just to notify the commissioners that the, what you got in your pack at the MOU, we called a couple of typos. David actually did and so we updated it. So it's, there's just a couple of small word changes, nothing substantive. But, um, just to make sure it's a little bit different than what you got to sign.
Okay.
Okay.
We're still gonna do it.
That's right.
We still gonna do it. Yes, sir. I don't change that answer.
All right.
There's a slide deck coming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Duncan, staff. Thanks for having us here. Uh, it is a privilege to be here. It's a particular privilege to be here on this day. Uh, this day that, that we remembered at the start of this, uh, this meeting, this day to talk about, uh, facilities for first responders. So thank you, thank you for that opportunity. Uh, I'm George Alton. I'm the CEO of the Atriax Group of Companies. Uh, we've got a very short, uh, slide deck for you. We'll go through that quickly. We know you've got, uh, an agenda after hours, so we wanna respect your time and we'll move through that. But please be, please know that we have, uh, will take as long as we, as you would like for any questions and answers, cause we're here to, we're here to answer any questions that, uh, that you all might, might have. Um, let me just, I'm just gonna introduce ourselves. I'm not gonna read the slides to you. You all have those in front of you. You all have those in front of you, you can see them. You know, who are we? What are we about? We are probably the biggest, most capable company in the uniform area in the architecture, engineering, and construction business that nobody's ever heard of. We do, we are a service-disabled veteran-owned company. Several of us have served full careers and otherwise in the cloth of our nation, and we're proud to bring that veteran ownership here. We're a purpose-built company for design build. We don't do just design build. We have an operating company. You'll see this, we have an operating company that does architecture and engineering services. That company operates independently, or in conjunction with our general contracting company, that operates independently, or in conjunction with our AE company. We're here to talk about your Cajun Mountain EMS base, which we're pleased to be considered for. We do consider that a privilege. We are, we feel like this project is right in our wheelhouse. I've got with me Mike McCourt, you'll hear from him later. He was his last job in uniform. He was the commander of the Department of Defense Fire Academy at Goodfellow Air Force Base in Texas. We've got three or four of us who have served as base civil engineers in the Air Force, and base fire marshals, where we were responsible for all of fire protection on an air force base. And in some of our cases, we also had EMS and pre-hospital care as part of that response as well. So we feel like that this project is right, right in our lanes. I tell you, as much as anything else, we are really about collaboration. We're here as a design-build firm, but this is your project. It's your design, it's your project. We're going to, we're going to walk through that with you, facilitate that with you, but our process is one of collaboration from initial schematics and the concept all the way through ribbon-cutting to the final brick-and-mortar product. This is, this is a little organization of the team. You're going to hear from some others and talk about some of our portfolio, but you can see our design personnel on the left-hand side of that slide, and our construction staff and CM staff on the right-hand side of that slide. We are probably, we may be the only firm, I'm not sure, we may be the only firm in North Carolina that has professional licenses for architecture, from the North Carolina Board of Architecture, engineering, from the North Carolina Board of Engineering and Land Surveyors, and an unlimited general contractor's license under one roof. We all sit together. We don't, we don't contract that out. Obviously, we bring in some of the specialty services, and bring in some of the trades that are subcontracted, but our licenses for engineering, architecture, and general contracting are all under one roof. That's just a really quick introduction of who we are, what we're about. We're going to get into some, I'm going to leave this up here and ask a couple of our other staff to come up and talk to you more specifically about our experience and about Cajun Mountain. First, Simon Lucas, who's the general manager of our general contracting arm.
Thank you, George, and good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here this evening.
Yes, sir.
The reason I've asked George to leave this slide up is because, as George said, I look after the construction side of the business within the group. Some of our key contractors that work with us are critical to the success of this project. And we have taken a long time to select the people that work alongside Atriax in the broader sense. They're not just from a phone book. Over a series of years, we've worked hard to sort the wheat from the chaff, select the people that understand the Atriax standards, the quality we require, and the timing in which we need to work. So all of those people on that slide are hand-selected, and importantly, they have some experience which is, which relates to the Cajun Mountain project, whether it's metal buildings, whether it's the actual plumbing that goes into the building. They've all had some experience relevant to this project. In fact, many of them actually live in Caldwell County. The other thing that I think is really important in this is that they're not just people we hand the plans to once we've done the design. I learned very early on that these guys are smart, they run their own businesses, they understand what's required to actually not only design, but execute a construction project. So you will see as we go forwards, they're actively involved in the design, because quite often they can tell you what's constructable, what isn't, what's feasible, what isn't, what is the most efficient way to build these projects, and also, you know, what is most cost-effective. And as you, as the client, that's extremely important. So they'll be involved as we go through the design process with your team. So there's a very strong partnership ethic that we adopt, as George has mentioned. And on that theme, I'd just like to pay tribute to Donald and his team. We've been working with Jonathan Cook, Dino, and Jeff Cardwell, to mention just a few, because as George has said, this is your project. We're here to deliver your vision for now and for the future. So it's not just a project that we've picked, that we'd like to do. It really demonstrates our capabilities, but it's important that we work and deliver something which is a need for you. Conscious of your time, I'm just going to run through a couple of examples which demonstrate some of that capability in action. The first one is our newly renovated building in Hickory, our new group headquarters, which you'll see on the slide deck there. The reason I've chosen this one is because the Cajun Mountain facility is in part a renovation project, and there's no better example that I can bring up for you than the renovation of that ugly building on the top right-hand corner to our state-of-the-art facility at the bottom right-hand corner. What you see in the middle is the rendering of what it was designed to look like before we even broke ground. So hopefully you can see the similarity between, you know, the idea and the actual reality. And it is, in fact, the best demonstration of what we do. There is no amount of lipstick that we could put on that building in the top right-hand corner that would transform that animal into something that we could take as is. So in conjunction with our engineers, our architects, and in fact, our interior design team, which form part of the Atriax Group, we configured this building that you see in the bottom right-hand corner. A brief history, that building was actually built in 1962. It's eleven and a half thousand square feet, and as I've mentioned, using all of our skillsets, we've turned it into our new office facility, which we're very proud of. For once, we have everybody under the same roof. So any project that comes our way, we can collaborate under that roof to deliver the proposition. And at this point, I'd like to extend an invitation to you, if you ever find yourself on Main Avenue, Southwest in Hickory, please feel free to ring the bell and come on in and take a look around. I think the one thing I would say is that the vision has delivered everything that we wanted as a company, happy clients, and probably most importantly, for the city. This was in a less desirable part of town. It's already been selected for a beautification award from the City of Hickory. It's helped revitalize, which was really a very poor downtrodden neighborhood, and has also attracted city grants to use a vacant building and for job creation as well. So we feel very proud of what we've delivered here, and it's our intent to do exactly the same for you gentlemen with the Cajun Mountain facility. The last one I'd just like to talk about, may seem a little strange. It's a townhome development that we literally built from the ground up in Conover, North Carolina. This was a four-acre site, which we have turned into a very nice townhome development with twenty townhomes on. The reason I've brought this one up is because one of the key successes for this particular project was our collaboration with the local city and county. We just didn't find the parcel of land and decided we were going to build some townhomes. We actually worked with the local city officials. County staff identified through research and collaboration what was required in the community. And single-story, upscale townhomes is something that they had a shortage of. Suffice to say that we delivered twenty townhomes. The success in that is that they were all sold before construction was completed. In fact, my phone still rings now for people looking for exactly this kind of requirement. But it wouldn't have been possible without the collaboration of the city and county staff, and they were with us throughout the whole process. So we're very proud of what we've done here, and it would be remiss of me not to notice that behind the Cajun Mountain facility, you also have some land which I think there may be residential requirements. So we're ideally suited to satisfy that required, that requirement if called upon. So that's a summation of a couple of projects which demonstrates our broad capability on the design-build front. And so we're already underway with some of the work with your colleagues. And to that point, I'd like to hand over to Mike McCourt now, who's going to give you an update on progress today. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Simon. Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike McCourt, I'll be the PM for this project on the Atriax side. So as Simon has just stated, we've already been working with your team, your county team, thanks to Mr. Duncan, and Mr. Cardwell, and everybody else that's been helping us out so far, and having some very productive sessions. We've been able to develop a conceptual design, which I'll go in the next slide, but in order to get to that point, we've done several site visits to the current site on Connolly Springs. And then we've also, which was very valuable to us, we went to all your current sites. We went to Lower Creek, Hudson, Grace Chapel, and Granite Falls. And in those visits, we looked at what really worked within your facilities, and we also pointed out, or pointed out to us, what really needed to be approved upon. And there was two primary things that we observed. Of course, there was more, but the two primary things that we observed was really the lack of storage space that you had for a variety of items, equipment, medical supplies, and then also just the flow through your facilities. All right? And again, I'll bring those up again in the conceptual design. And then we've already started having some design meetings, right? And we're going to meet again upon approval of this within the next couple of weeks to make sure that we can continue on with the effort. So with this, I'm going to walk over here so I can point out a few items. So this is your, in the upper right here, this is the current layout of the facility that you have. You can see this is, again, this is a conceptual floor plan. Even the rendering that we showed you earlier, and you'll see at the end, that's conceptual, right? So it will change. It will change. It'll be a little bit different than the renderings that you've already seen, and this floor plan is going to change. But this is an outstanding, from my perspective, right? And then it's a great start to the process. So you can see it's already changed, right? And the biggest thing you're going to see here is the addition of your bay, which is going to house your vehicles, right? Down to the lower right, we've extended this portion of the facility out, and then up in the upper left, you can see that we've added in some space here, too. So it's given you a little bit of extra space. The two things that I did mention earlier, right, was having ample storage space. So we've added some storage space here, and that's more for what's going to go in your bay, all the quick items that you need to get into your bay and into your trucks. And then we also have some additional storage space in the back, you know, for anything that you need, that you can't fit in here, but also is going to support that training area that you need within your facility. All right? And then the other thing that I talked about was having that flow-through, right? So we know that when you respond, seconds matter, milliseconds matter. So the quicker you can get your folks out, the quicker you can get materials into your trucks, that's going to make a big difference to your operations. So we pushed that, or we had the corridor come all the way out. It gives you quick access, again, for your folks, but also you can see that we have some of the operational functions close to your bay. We have a decon room here, you know, so once your teams come back and they have to do some decontamination, they can go straight into that room, and then if they need to take a shower, probably, more likely, they're going to need to take a shower, so they can move right into this area here. And then also, we know that the heart of your facility, we know that you have a very close-knit group, so that kitchen and that day room is really important to your folks, to your staff. So that's kind of in the heart. And again, you have your training area up front here, you have some staff offices, and then also the sheriff's office here in the back, and they have an entrance in the back, so if they need to, a little bit more privacy, they have that, right? So that's just a real run-through of what we have so far. Again, that is just a great position to start from. So the next steps within our process, you know, hoping to get approval very quickly, and then we can start that initial, or hopefully get an initial design contract. That is a trigger for us, that allows us to continue down that path, develop that 35% design, and really get and develop that construction cost estimate, right? We have been talking with all of our subs, but we have not got them on contract yet. So that, again, that is a trigger point for us. We get a little bit of money behind this, and then we can get to those next steps. Then we can establish that final design-build contract, apply for permits, and then we can get moving, right? Do the demolition and the construction. All right? So George has already told you, why, what's the benefit of using Atriax, right? So I'm not going to go all through that again, but you know what? We are ready. We've been ready, we've been working this for the last couple of months now. We're hungry for this. No, we're not hungry because this is our next project. This is something that we feel passionate about, right? Again, as George stated, we have a lot of folks that have served in some capacity, and we want to continue to serve our community, and this is one way to do that. So with that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your time, and we'll answer any of your questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions of the group that's here? I'm sure they've got an answer with all the knowledge.
Yeah, where's that one guy from? He had a sort of a funny accent. I might go ask, because everybody on TV's going to...
Start to finish, what is a reasonable timeline from the time you start to the time you finish, till we move in?
We actually put together, I'll let George answer this, but we have put together a schedule as part of the... Sorry. Ten-twenty-four.
Okay.
There you go. Back up. As part of our response to the RFQ, we thought it appropriate to come up with a schedule based upon the requirements, and my eyesight doesn't allow me to tell you to look at the previous stage.
Don't feel bad.
I'm in denial, I have to tell you. But it was commensurate with what Donald and the team estimated would be required to get open, and I think the original requirement was to be open late 2024. Well, we've lost a little bit of time in the design process, waiting for approval. We will endeavor to try and catch up as much of that as we can by working in sync with the design and the construction teams, and that's one of the beauties of design-build, because you don't wait for the design to be finished to send it out, for quotes to come back in, to select who you're going to build it. We start working alongside each other all the way through, so that we do the cost estimation as the design is coming together, and then we can go out to the subs, the ones that I've mentioned, who are ready on standby for this project. So I expect us to try and retrieve some time in that. But our hope is, you know, in line with your requirement back end of next year.
Okay.
Weather permitting and no COVID crisis.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? It looks like we have two things that we need to approve in this design-build. And the first of those is a resolution to adopt and enter into the design-build-delivery method in construction contracts for approval of using the design-build-delivery method for Cajun's Mountain EMS base, and we've got a resolution in support of that. And so I would make the motion that we adopt that resolution this evening, as has been presented. Is any other comment or question about it? Here and none, I'll call the question. All in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And then the next would be a budget revision to start the process. Do you have anything you'd like to add there, Mr. Duncan?
No. I would just say, real quickly, that this will be the first of many steps. So once we get back from this 35% design build, then we'll bring back a final contract. And this is just to make sure that we're going to be on budget with the funds that we have that are remaining from the loan proceeds at the animal care facility.
Yeah. What is our budget for this project?
So just construction items, as we're estimating based on purely on square footage, somewhere between 1.8 and 2 million, but then you've got appliances, furnishing, training materials, civil site work, so I'd say we're approaching probably 3 million, but that's just a guess. We'll wait and see. In a month or so, they'll come back with a better estimate, and I can tell you more accurately than, sir.
If it comes back at 3 million, we're going to question all that. Just because he said 3 million, don't mean we want to spend 3 million.
Let's hope it's not more.
All right. Any other questions about that? So what, do I hear a motion that we adopt the budget revision? And it looks like that's an amount of $103,000?
No, sir, 51,000.
51,000?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the wrong budget.
Yeah, 51,500, sorry.
All right. So do I hear a motion that we approve the budget revision of 51,000?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget revision of 51,000 for the Cajun's Mountain EMS base project.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? That's 51,500, right?
Yeah. It counts twice, because we moved it from one fund to the next.
I got you.
Yeah.
I see that now.
Sorry.
That's where it's coming to the 103.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. Next item for decision is our 2013 tax release, and our tax administrator, Mr. Josh Engel, is with us this evening. So welcome, Josh, again.
Good evening, again.
We expect 50 years out of him, too.
I don't know that I can do it. I hate to disappoint you. Each year, we present the 10-year-old delinquent taxes to you. Per NC General Statute 105-378A, these taxes are no longer collectible by enforced collections. For 2013, the total number of real and personal property taxes outstanding is 113,187.70. This is an updated number from this morning, and I'm proud to report that it's a 17%, in excess of 17% improvement over the numbers I brought to you last year. And so this evening, I'm requesting the board release the 10-year-old delinquent taxes.
All right. So anybody have a question about that? Here and none, I'll recommend that the board release the 10-year-old delinquent taxes as presented by our administrator this evening, in the amount of 113,187.70. Y'all didn't think I wrote that down, did you? Any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries reluctantly, but we will allow it. Thank you, Josh. Next is our consent agenda. So Mr. Donald Duncan, our county manager.
I'll try to be brief. If anybody has any questions, just interrupt me as we go. Number 11 is approval of the minutes from the August 14 meeting. Number 12 is a resolution of opioid settlement funds. We've done this so many times, but we sent it to the state, they sent back corrections, they send us adjustments and suggestions, so we have to amend it as they return it to us. Budget revisions, award of the capital outlay loan. You've already approved this in the budget, but we have to also award the loan, Bank of America, with 1.7 million dollars for 59 months at a 4.28% interest rate, and closing costs, which you're also approving, of 15,287. Budget amendment for animal care and enforcement to use 5,000 in donated funds from the public for additional stainless steel beds, because the plastic ones are being eaten, microchips and food for animals. Tuition reimbursement benefit for the employees, the commissioners have already approved that at the last meeting, and we really appreciate that. Staff are starting to take advantage of it. We have about a half a dozen already that would like to do that, so we're estimating 30,000 for the year. We have no idea yet, but we'll see, because we still have the spring semester to come. Wilson Creek legal fees, I'm recommending that we hire a firm to assist us in working with our... with our federal partners to get more attention to Wilson Creek, to preserve that natural beauty before it is decimated by abuse, and preserve it for the sportsmen and kayakers and fishing and hunting and, and the neighborhood that's there. And thanks to our sheriff's office for all their hard work, as well as emergency services. But I think that's where we're at now, is we've gotta get their attention, and so we need some additional help. And recommend using a firm that is also endorsed by the Association of County Commissioners. Costful tank amendment for engineering services. We're building a water tank, and so we gotta start funding the engineering services. You funded last month, I believe, no, a month and a half ago, the funding for the construction. Now this is the engineering services, construction oversight, as well as tank closing. And then we have to do our water shortage response plan every five years. There are four of those resolutions there, because we have four independent systems that are not interconnected. And then appointment of Cynthia Watkins on council for the aging. She is recommended from the council and the agent and council of governments. We had another one that came in too late for the agenda, but we'll add that at next month for October. And item 20, we added at the beginning of the meeting for ARC grant, fingers crossed, for Evergreen Industrial Park, an amount of half a million dollars. And I'll answer any questions.
All right, anybody have any questions? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next, we're gonna be entering into a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11(c). Do I hear a motion that we enter into that closed session?
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to make that motion to enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11(c) to consult with an attorney employed or to retain by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileged is hereby acknowledged with the county attorney, county manager, county clerk, deputy county manager, and chief financial officer in attendance.
All right. Hearing the motion, any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will adjourn into our closed session. And we appreciate everyone being here this evening, and I hope you have a good evening.